I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, February 27, 2019, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I have one addition to the agenda tonight. It will be item 11.04, and the title is "Incentive for Advanced Notification of Retirement." So with that, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda with the addition of item 11.04, incentive for advanced notification of retirement under the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
And then our next item is a board appointment underneath COMAR and the Annotated Code of Maryland, since we already have a sitting superintendent who has notified the board that he would like to be considered for an additional four-year contract. By state law, we have to vote to reappoint Dr. Smith by March 1st. So that is the background on this agenda item. So with that, may I have a motion?
I move that pursuant to Article 4-201 of the Annotated Code of Maryland, that the board reappoint the superintendent, Dr. James Scott Smith, for a four-year term beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending on June 30th, 2023.
May I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Just kidding, motion carries. Congratulations. What a crowd.
Can we change our mind?
No, it's on camera, Jim. So with that, you get to follow with board reports.
Awesome. I don't know if I can top that, but I hope you guys are all having a wonderful evening. It's so nice to see so many bright, vibrant faces at 6:00 PM, because I know everybody's tired by this point. The event I attended this week was the St. Mary's Association of Student Council General Assembly, and technically it was last week, because it was held on February 21st. But basically what we did there was we elected a new student member of the board, because I will be leaving after this year. This is my final term, and I'll be ending in May. So we elected a new student member, and we'll disclose who that person is later. And then we also discussed some different Maryland General Assembly legislation, which is where we will be having Advocacy Day up in, like, the Baltimore, DC area. And basically what happens is that a group of SMASK people get to come together, and we have different senatorial bills that are being passed right now, and we get to go up and we get to talk to some of the people that are in office right now and give us or give them our feedback on what we think the bill should look like. So we got to talk with some other students on a more general scale and get their ideas about the bills, so we can take that information up to Baltimore, DC when we go. And then we also just did some SMASK updates between schools, and we presented some mask updates. And the schools that attended were Esperanza Middle School, Leonardtown Middle School, Margaret Brett Middle School, Spring Ridge Middle School, Chopticon Middle, Chopticon High School, Great Mills High School, and Leonardtown High School. So we got a good mix of everybody. Thank you.
On Monday, I attended the, it was the 59th Annual St. Mary's County Science and Engineering Fair Awards Reception, and that was put on by the Patuxent Partnership and the Council on Systems Engineering. It was really neat. So it was middle and high school students that had won awards for their projects, and it was, I found it very interesting going around and speaking with the students and looking at their projects. They demonstrated and explained, one of the projects, two young men in high school put together a, it was a robotic arm. So you stood in front of this TV screen, but it had some camera, and you moved your arm, and the robot moved its arm along how, you know, whichever way you were moving. It was very unique and neat. There was a young lady who did where you could, crabbers could scan the crabs as they were coming in to make sure that they were the proper size, to save them a little bit of time. And of course, a lot of different ones, but my favorite one was a young man who did about feeding his horses. So he was explaining to me that the horses need to be fed several times a day in order to prevent ulcers, and I guess when he was getting his one horse that was coming up from, I guess, like Texas or somewhere, and the person that was carrying the horse had to keep stopping to feed it. So he developed a system where on a timer, there was a certain amount of feed in this bucket, and it would, at certain times, drop some feed down for the horse. So I thought that was very unique and interesting, and it solved a problem that he was having. So hopefully one day he'll get that on the market and have patented, and I'm sure that there will be a lot of people interested in purchasing that. So, but it was a lot of fun. This, like I said, the students had all different types of projects, and, you know, way above what I was doing in middle school and high school. So had a great time.
I attended the MAB legislative conference up in Annapolis, along with all my colleagues and Dr. Smith. It was quite interesting. There was a captive audience, so all of the legis, most of the legislators showed up, and it was quite interesting. They talked on various subjects, but all related to affecting the school system, especially the pending legislative bills that they were going to be voting on. I have a whole list, but I don't want to go through that. But it was a very interesting topic. I also attended last Saturday MedStar Health Workshop at the Forest Center. I'm a member of the Lions-Leonardtown Club, and we have a vision, a vision center, so anybody that can come in and we can check their vision for short and long-sight defective defects, and that lasted for about four, five hours. It didn't have as big a turnout as I was hoping, but I think that was of interest. Also, I attended the Patuxent Partnership Awards Presentation with Mrs. Weaver. And lastly, I attended the arts demonstration they had done at the Forest Center the other day. This was young folks showing all of their artwork. It was really amazing. If you hadn't seen it, it was really amazing to me, not being an artist, how competent they were in their artwork. It was very impressive.
All right, Jim took most of my report with the MAB Legislative Luncheon, so ditto on that. And then a couple weeks ago, and I did mention at the last board meeting, I did attend the Skills USA competition that was at the Tech Center on the, I think it was February 9th. I walked around, they were still doing their electrical and their carpentry. They had the teaching academy. I felt so, it was almost like it was an aquarium window, because the student was up there, you know, teaching, but yet you could watch from behind. So they did, they did a fabulous job, and hats off to the culinary students who provided food for everyone who was competing and all of the judges. They also, the one that was really interesting also is that they were doing commercials through the visual media, that they were given topics, and then they had to, they had so much time in order to create a 30-second radio and, I believe, you know, TV spot. So hats off to them. I think all of the high schools, they're all involved in some type of SMAC regionals or thing. Basketball's still going strong, so good luck to all of our sports teams. I think they, I know wrestling did well at Chopticon, the indoor track, it's the state meet, they did well there, too. So congratulations and good luck to all of our student athletes.
Thank you.
If parents are wondering what their children are going to do when they graduate from high school, one of the good places to go was the 8th Annual Southern Maryland Spring College and Career Festival, which was held at the Forest Center. And it's going to be a presentation on this later on in the meeting, but I highlight one thing that I really appreciated, and that was there were many career opportunities there available for students. There were people that had talked to them about, right after you graduate from high school, how much money you'll be earning, education benefits, health benefits, everything that students need, that they could start work right away after graduating from high school. And why was the Maryland Department of Transportation, the Armed Forces, Army, Air Force, Navy, and Marines were there, the St. Mary's County Sheriff's Office, the Merchant Marines, the St. Mary's County Volunteer Fire Department and Rescue Squad, and somebody representing correctional officers, that they could get a job there. So I think, you know, it's going to be presented later, but that's what I really appreciated, that your student can have a job when they graduate from high school. And they talked that, you know, you can go to college as well, but we will pay for your college education, and you will get paid as well. So that was really great to have those representatives there with job opportunities for our students, because some students will go directly into the workforce and some will go directly to college. So you'll hear more about it later on.
You've heard that we all do quite a bit in terms of being out in the community and visiting schools and visiting various events put on by the schools. So you've heard a lot about what I've already done, but what I'd like to highlight tonight is that I represent this body on the MAB Legislative Committee. We, as a board, utilize MAB to advocate for us in Annapolis with respect to bills that directly affect education. While there are boards across the state who choose to deliberate on bills and discuss them and vote them up or down as far as their support, we have not ever made a practice of doing that. And so we utilize MAB in that, in that respect, and they do so very effectively. Right now, MAB is following more than 350 bills that have been dropped that directly affect education in some fashion. We, you've heard us talk before about going to our Fall Conference that's provided by MAB, and during that conference, any interested member is able to go and be part of a general meeting at which we vote on resolutions that determine how MAB will advocate on our behalf in Annapolis. So we come up with statements of resolution, and then that informs everything going forward. So it's always interesting, and I try my best to keep my colleagues apprised of anything that I feel is specific to our community, to our county. And one of the important things that I do there is to represent a more rural area and a more conservative view. You know, we go from, all the way from the smallest in Kent County up to the largest in Montgomery County, and so we don't always come about things from the same position. But I think it's important for them to understand that if they're advocating for things that are going to be impossible for us to provide because we don't have the resources or we don't have the personnel or, and can't even find the personnel, they need to understand that. And so I don't think I'm a thorn in their side, but I certainly am vocal. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to represent us and to represent our community in Annapolis through MAB.
That's a wonderful segue. Thank you for the opportunity. So thank you for the opportunity, to all of you, for the next four years to continue instead as superintendent. And one of the best things I get to do is to travel to all these events and to share the successes of our students and our staff. It really is quite wonderful. An example of this is, can be seen on Monday, where we go through our day and we're visiting our schools, and we're going and seeing the middle school and the Principal's Advisory Council in So Lake, getting out and seeing these middle, our middle school learners. And tomorrow, Ms. Meadows will be joining us, and we're going to have our middle school leaders come in for a day of leadership and conversation and talking about advocacy of our middle school students, and that's quite a great opportunity. But that same day on Monday, I did get to go down to Great Mills High School to see our wonderful scientists, our future scientists, and our mathematicians, and the STEM students, and our great partnerships with the Patuxent Partnership and INCOSI. But then leave there, go up to the Forest Center, walk in the atrium, have Hunter Martin, have the LHS band play "Crazy Train" as I walked in, which, you know, a fan favorite from the 80s, and then spend time with Mrs. Washington, a former student who has become a teacher, to talk about the wonderful art and experience that she has with kids. That really is quite great. Yesterday, I was at the State Board of Ed meeting in the morning, and their meetings start in the morning and they go until about 5:30 at night. So again, I thank you very much for the opportunity to continue in my four. One of the things that they talked about was teacher certification, and how important it is to have the most qualified, dedicated, passionate, creative teacher in front of children. And what they lauded above all else is the educators who strive for the golden standard of National Board Certification. I think the current pass rate is about 65% of the people who strive to do this, to attain this really wonderful thing. So I'm going to conclude by saying, I'm really looking forward to recognizing the people who have attained that today, recognize that we appreciate and applaud you for your hard work and dedication to our kids, but that's the truth at the state level. These teachers who will be recognized today, that National Board Certification is universally recognized across the United States. You could go to any state, walk in the door, be highly qualified and certificated, and teach. Thank you very much for staying in St. Mary's County, the mother county, the very best place to live and work and raise and spend time with children. Thank you very much.
With that, we'll just roll right into Mrs. Dill. You're on.
Yes.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Dr. Smith, and thank you for the wonderful introduction. I feel like I don't have to say anything else about, I mean, yes, exactly. I wanted to just take a second to refresh memories or maybe tell the audience about National Board Certification, and I think the best source would be to go straight toward, to the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards. So National Board Certification was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. It is the most respected professional certification available in K through 12 education. Created by teachers for teachers, the National Board Standards represents a consensus among educators about what accomplished teachers should know and be able to do. Board Certification is available in 25 certificate areas spanning 16 disciplines from pre-K through 12th grade. The certification process requires that teachers demonstrate standards-based evidence of the positive effect they have on student learning in alignment with the five core props, the five core propositions of teaching. They must exhibit a deep understanding of their students, content knowledge, use of data, and assessment, and teaching practice. They must also show that they participate in learning communities and provide evidence of ongoing reflection and continuous learning. So National Board Certification is really, truly, an accomplishment that demonstrates the whole teaching profession. These teachers have really worked hard over, it's a one to three-year path, they have to demonstrate their ability in four different components, and they truly are a standard to which all teachers hope to achieve. So without further ado, Dr. Smith, would you like to come up?
Sure.
And recognize? This year, we have five initial certifiers, so this is their first time through. Ready? Okay.
Sure, yeah.
Mr. Brett Johnson, representing Chopticon High School, certified in, he's certified in physical education, early adolescence through young adulthood. Do you want him to stay?
I think we should have him stay.
We have Ms. Taryn Long from Chesapeake Public Charter School. She, she's certified in mathematics, early adolescence. Ms. Jamie Penny, representing Mechanicsville Elementary School. And Ms. Penny is a generalist in early childhood education. Ms. Marjorie Walsh from Great Mills High School. And Ms. Walsh certified in English Language Arts, adolescence through young adulthood. And Ms. April Wathan, Letty Marshall Dent Elementary. And Ms. Wathan celebrated, sorry, certified in library media, early childhood through young adulthood. And in addition to our five initial certifiers, we have a renewal candidate. So this candidate initially certified a decade ago and decided to continue her journey by renewing her certification this year, and that is Ms. Mary Ritter from Leonardtown Early childhood generalist as well. Thank you. So our National Board Certified Teachers.
So I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I do, I do know some of you are comfortable speaking. Is there anything you'd like to share? If not, I'll just say a couple of things, but speak now. This is your only? Really, that's it? You're good? Okay.
They voted you another four years.
Yeah, right. All right, so let's just make ourselves comfortable. No. It is an exceptional attainment of a professional standard. The Kerwin Commission, they've spent a year and a half, almost two years, and they continue their work, talking about what makes education work. And what makes education work is the teacher in the classroom, and the greatest standard that they can achieve is to be nationally board certified. It is extremely rigorous. Would you all attest to that? Is it one of the most challenging things that you did professionally in your time that you've worked with children? It is based on not only the work itself, but on deep reflection and personal improvement, and you are all exceptional standards, standard bearers of that. So with that, I want to make sure that the one thing, you can go anywhere in the United States and you will be certified. You can teach anywhere. What is the only place where you want to work? What is the only, where, where is, like, what? So let's get a commitment out of you to stay with us until you can recertify. So thank you for being with us and recertifying with us, and please may you all do the exact same thing. Last chance, anybody else? No, thank, just thank you very much.
Do you want a group picture?
Well, are we all right to pause for a second and get a group picture?
You're on, that'll give me a chance to figure out the PowerPoints.
Okay.
Okay, so let's pause for a second. We'll get all of you up here, we'll get a group picture, and then we'll get our principals to come in. Thanks very much, principals, for coming in.
Thanks very much, principals, for coming in.
Just give us one second.
They're making modifications, I think, to the slide. Then it all falls apart. But that was nice.
This would have been nice.
I'll make sure to turn it off.
Oh, yes. I think I'm ahead of this point. I think I'm done at this point.
Okay.
Nope, nope, that's not it. Sorry about this, it wasn't loaded.
I'm sorry, that's probably my fault. So not only am I to move the podium, but I also should.
Yes, you did forget.
Well, no, we're not, we're not, they're presenting from the podium, so I'm.
Oh, okay.
I'll do my job, I promise.
Because they can go in through board docs.
Nope, we got it now.
Kipley just went so fast. I've narrowed down to the top three, which would be Roanoke, Salisbury, or St. Mary's. And I didn't administer to St. Mary's, and it's probably St. Mary's probably. And right now, Roanoke is in the top of the three. But I saw it too, is it Salisbury, to see?
Salisbury has a nice campus.
It's, Mr. Howard, you're gonna have to get up and walk and get within five feet, and then that's. Are you gonna do, are you doing the clicker, too?
I have the clicker.
All right.
Is that gonna work?
Did you try it?
Yeah. All right, got the clicker.
Okay.
Okay. Mrs. Dillahun, would you like to join me up here today?
Hey, hey, hey.
So, well, first of all, congratulations, Dr. Smith, for more years. I can say that it has been a joy to work with you, and I'm very happy that you were given four more years to work with us. So, congratulations.
It has been an adventure.
Yes, it has been. It definitely has been.
Yes.
So, we, tonight, Ms. Dillahun and I are going to present about the HBCU College Fair that Ms. Washington referenced, that took place on the 22nd of February. And it's really nice to end our celebration of African-American History Month, being able to talk about this wonderful event. It was, we have a fantastic partnership with the NAACP, and they work with us. We get a phone call at the beginning of every school year from Dr. Walthour and from Ms. Dillahun, and we come together with myself, Dr. Marr, Ms. Bachner, and these two lovely ladies, and we start to plan and put together who's doing what and how we're gonna make all of this come together and, you know, figure out what's gonna be nice for the students. Before I go on, I just want to say that Ms. Dillahun, she's an assistant principal at Spring Ridge Middle School, as all of you know. She's had a long history of working with St. Mary's County Public Schools prior to her role with the NAACP. So she's community activist and SMCPS employee. And then, Dr. Walthour, she is the former president of the NAACP, just recently left, a month ago, right? How many years did you serve in that role?
Actually, just two, but as Education Chair for the county.
For a long time, right? Well, before she did all of that, she was a principal in St. Mary's County and served many years. So she has, also has the school system perspective, and it's really wonderful to work with somebody that has been a part of the school system and also in planning these events and is a wonderful community activist. So I wanted to thank you. And there's also another sister, that Alfreda Mathis, your sister, your mother, who's also been involved and was a principal in the system. So wonderful history with this family, and so we do appreciate that and appreciate the relationship then we have with the NAACP. So, without further ado, I am going to pass it over to Ms. Dillahun. Do you want to click through, or do you want me to click through? You want, I will click through, but I will give you the mic.
Good evening, everyone. And it's an honor to be here yet again. Another year for the Seventh Annual Southern Maryland Spring College and Career Fair. I just want to highlight the goal, and I know it's up there, and I don't like to do a lot of reading of, you know, PowerPoints, but I do want to read the goal because it is important. The goal is to provide information about diverse opportunities for accessible, affordable, vocational, or university, college education that will lead to an equal opportunity to achieve economic success, sustainability, and financial security. And that's what we strive for, we all strive for, here in our school system, in America. We are striving for our students to have success in whatever way possible, substantially, financially, and so that's what the College Fair's goal is, and that's what we move forward to, move towards every year. And having said that, every year, we get an opportunity, a tremendous opportunity, to be able to come together to provide a service for the students of Southern Maryland. And having said that, it's a unique opportunity for those students to kind of experience and access a wide variety of colleges that would enable them, and careers, opportunities, that would enable them to make a better choice about their post-secondary academic life. And that opportunity should be never-ending, and I know that we move, we meaning the college, Spring College Fair moves in conjunction with the Fall College Fair. We want students, all students, to have the opportunity to be able to experience all types of colleges, career opportunities, and so that's why this is so important to us. So if we click to the next slide, the participants. And just talking about who the participants are, of course, our students. We had three high schools, Great Mills High School, Chopticon High School, Leonardtown High School, Fairlead One and Two, and we had Middle School, Spring Ridge Middle School that attended. We also had College of Southern Maryland students attending who were interested in transferring from College of Southern Maryland to a four-year college. We had other college, high schools in the county. Patuxent High School came out this year. We had North Point High School came out this year in numbers, and so it is really picking up in the Southern Maryland area. A lot of, I'm sorry, a lot of the counties are finding it a wonderful opportunity for them to come down to the Southern Maryland Spring College Fair at this time. So let's move forward. Thank you. And so these are all of the colleges, the career opportunities that were available. I believe overall there were over maybe forty, and colleges and careers there, and also opportunities for students to have summer internships. And I have to say something, the abacus table had so many students around it. It was one of the hits of the College Fair. They were asking, "Where is that table? Where is the table?" And we announced it, and kids were just crowded around it, crowded around the fire and rescue, crowded around St. Mary's County Sheriff's Department, and I just thought it was a wonderful opportunity for them. Some of the students had no idea of all the services and all of the career opportunities available, and it really just gives them a great, it's a great way for them to be able to establish a relationship with those organizations. And our partnerships, we had several more people that had donated, but these are our partners, keeping students on track, the St. Mary's County Public Library, our Minority Outreach, Job Source, our St. Mary's County, of course, Board of Elections, St. Mary's County Government, St. Mary's County Academy Programs and AP, Walden, Wells Fargo, BECA College Access Program, and our Youth and Young Adult Services. So here's the big deal, okay? So, we had a great turnout this year, and our numbers show we had about 281 students, I think it was a little bit more than 281, because there was a lot of students there. But 281 students attending, and the breakdown of high schools, 68 for Great Mills High School, Chopticon 52, Leonardtown 94, Fairlead Academy 22, Springer's Middle School 35, and other schools, 10. I think there's a higher number there, because there was a lot more students from North Point, Patuxent. So, I would say we were close to our 300 mark, maybe a little bit over 300, but we did go by the specific numbers that we counted. And, the big deal, we had 20 students who received on-the-spot acceptances and over $19,000 in scholarships awarded, and these are all the schools. I know we have a few more out there, because a good way that we kept track this year, which I'm very, very proud of, is, and I don't have it on here, but actually, the students would get a form, and it's called "I'm In." That's the new thing, "I'm In." And they would get the form, they'd fill out their "I'm In" form with their information, and then they would bring the form up to the podium, they would get announced, and basically I'd say, "Dr. Maureen Montgomery."
I'm in.
"She has been accepted to blah, blah, blah college. She's in." And then she'd have her "I'm In" sticker, and she would go to the "I'm In" table, she would take a picture. So, this year was a really good process of kind of getting, keeping track of some of those students who got accepted on the spot. We did miss a few, because some of them were so excited, they just ran on out the building and onto their bus. And so I know that there were more students that were accepted on the spot. However, I really believe, in looking at some of our evaluations and hearing some of the comments, that this was one of our most successful college fairs yet. And we are pressing forward to our Eighth Annual College Fair and Career Fair, and we thank you for your support, and we want to continue to partner with you for many years to come.
All right. We do take next steps also. So we have 20 students that receive scholarships, and then we take the names of those 20 students, we go back to the schools, we have the counselors follow up with them, follow up with them about financial aid, about what they need to do to complete their applications. So we take the next steps with the kids, so we can do as much as we possibly can to get them interested in going to the schools. So, very exciting, very exciting. I have one more thing to say. Oh, yes, please do. But I did give you just a sample of what, and actually, it's a mixture between what the career and college, the career organizations and college recruiters got, and the students. So in the packet, there is, of course, a listing of the students, I meant the colleges and career organizations that attended. There is a schedule set up as to, you know, where, what time all the students would be coming in. There is information on our partnerships, and information on what you do before you visit a college fair, kind of some thinkabouts and things for students. There is a lovely flyer in here about our Teacher Academy, Maryland, our Teachers' Academy Program, and they were, again, wonderful hosts for our program, and we partner with them every year, as well as the Culinary Arts Program. I'm trying to, culinary arts, graphic arts, hospitality. Am I missing anyone? I know I am. But we partner with the Forest Center students and those programs. And we have the Planning for College, which is amazing. This book has all types of planning for college, for middle school, for high school, checklists, everything, and those students got that. And then, in honor of the HBCUs, they've got a little card here that says, "What is a historically black college and university?" And on the back, they are different historically black colleges and universities highlighted, and they got a chance to see, you know, this is one's a Virginia State University, and the history of that particular HBCU. That's it. Thank you again. Thank you.
So, Dr. Smith, do you want to?
Well, so I think we'll pause and get a picture, but well. So, I was there that day, and you can feel the excitement in the students that came that day. I was introduced to a young gentleman who was coming out, and I don't think he went back and filled out a form. But when he got there in the morning, he didn't have his transcript, he didn't really have a plan, he hadn't filled out his FAFSA, and he hadn't really thought about a college or university. He spent 35 minutes in there, came back out, we printed him out a transcript so he could bring it back. Norfolk College said, "Oh, my gosh, look at this transcript." He had As and Bs, and it was great. He came back out, they filled out a FAFSA form, he went back in, and he was offered. That young man told me he wants to become a secondary education major. So I said, "Here's the deal, go to Norfolk, finish in four years, come back, we'll give you a job." That young man walked in the door of the tech center without a plan and walked out with a four-year degree pathway program and employment. And most importantly to me is that he wants to be, he wants to be an educator. And that's incredibly, that's incredibly important. The only way we are going to meet the critical shortage of educators that is, that is here right now and will do nothing but become more dire, is to inspire our young people to work with our children. And I'd just like to applaud you, Ms. Dillahun specifically, Dr. Walthour, for an unwavering amount of support that you have shown your entire life to children in St. Mary's County and the school system and the community. And so with that, I'd love to have a picture taken, if we could, of all of us up here. And so can we, can we pause again and take a picture, so we can have this on the front? All right, that's all.
Four more years? We're here to make you happy, yes.
We're here to make you happy, yes.
Nice.
We haven't had Kathy yet.
Awesome.
We need one more minute.
We lost, you know, we lost Kathy. Sorry to keep track of everybody.
Oh, leave any public comments, by the way?
No.
Okay.
She would. I spent any would have reminded us. That's it.
Oh, my goodness, stop.
Four more years.
Four more years. [laughter]
Okay, let's see. Before we go to the CTE grant, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now, you're on.
Do you gavel in, or what do we gotta do?
Ta-da.
Robert's rolling.
There you go.
Do I have to do the consent agenda again, then?
It's really just so she tapes it. Got it.
You good? Here we go.
I'm good to go.
All right, a little background on our innovation grant. In July of 2018, Governor Hogan had earmarked $2 million for CTE innovation to the counties of Maryland. It was a competitive grant in which we wrote a grant for cybersecurity. Some of our needs with cybersecurity obviously are a little bit of security inside of our own infrastructure. So, what we were looking to do, and we've worked together with MSDE, is the grant kind of worked around, we worked very closely with MSDE, especially Ms. Mary here, because she knows the jargon, the talk. I don't, you know, so. She knows what she was actually buying. So, in this grant, we're going to create, well, Mary, tell us what we're gonna create.
Please share.
The intricacies of cybersecurity.
Yeah, so, our hope and goal was, was to create basically a cyber ranger cyber lab that students would have hands-on experience, either installing, deploying, and troubleshooting actual computer systems, networking devices, building on the cybersecurity, being able to launch attacks, do viruses, hack, you know, those type of things that all sound very scary when they're sitting inside of a school. And we wanted to create something so that we could have those devices that can do that, but it would be isolated, so it would be protected. And then also be able to, part of this grant that we wrote into it was something that we're going to pilot with other counties. So, we're gonna create as a professional development for other teachers to come in and build with that. And then eventually, our long end goal is that we actually would connect to other similar classes, IT classes, cybersecurity classes in the state. And to make it sound fun, basically be able to launch attacks on other classes and do things and learn and kind of be able to use the resources outside of our classroom that maybe we can provide, kind of spread the resources out a little bit. So, that was kind of the background to what we wanted to do.
So, ultimately, what we're doing is building the infrastructure that might reach across the entire state. So, for us right now, there's three counties. It's us, Howard County, and Eastern Shore County, and I keep meaning to look that up, but I forget. So, ultimately, I think, and that's why we're working so closely with MSDE, is this infrastructure's going to be across all state, and everybody's going to be able to do what hopefully Mary's gonna be able to do as soon, as soon as next year, attack Howard County or protect from Howard County attacking us. So, that's, that's what we're, we put in for. Right now, three counties did, have been granted this. And so, on January 24th, the project was approved. We were awarded $133,529 for this fiscal year, which means we, we still have plenty of time. I mean, we're, we're gonna do it now. If I went to the next, the slide, I've kind of already talked to you about our cooperation with MSDE. But here, I kind of, I've kind of talked about in the spring of 2019, well, we've pushed it out a little bit. We've had to. The other two counties are going to still do it in the spring. They're gonna be mid-March. They're gonna put theirs together. And, and what's the kind of cool thing about it is, they've already purchased their stuff and are ready to build. And the teachers from around the state will professional development to those areas. So, when, with them doing that both in March, we're gonna do ours in the summer with MSDE. So, we'll professional development here in the summer. All those teachers from around the state will come and build ours. It'll already, it's already been specked out, and that's the really nice part about it. We don't, our procurement is already kind of done for us. MSDE has already figured that all out, what everything needs, for everything to, to talk together. And that's obviously where Mary and MSDE really came in. And she was probably the true selling point of this because she was able to talk those. I, I couldn't talk to Jason. I didn't, I didn't know what he was saying. But obviously, Mary could, and I think she really sold it, and we were lucky enough to be one of those three that got it. Basically, what we're asking today is a recommendation that the board approve the, the agenda as presented for our acceptance for the innovation grant.
I have no questions for you.
Please, ask Mary.
[laughter] No questions, thank you.
Well, I don't have a question right at this, this moment, but I am very much in favor of the Tech Center. I've said this so many times. My son went through this Tech Center, and he was in the IT networking, came out with a certification, and right now, he is in cybersecurity and very successful and loving his job. I'm glad to see that you went from the two-year program and added this because he tells me all the time that they, they are in need of people with a certification. So, I think it's, it's great. And I would like to see that it, it does go, you know, throughout the state because I think that, you know, with having more people in the networking system, that the students would, I guess, you know, more challenges and, you know, being able to block the people coming in versus, you know, sneaking in there and, and hacking their system. So, great job, great writing for your grant, and wish you success, and look forward to seeing what, what all you did with it.
Probably the other two counties need to thank Mary as well, because I think it was Mary's initial conversations with Jason that made them start thinking about how to, we, we put in a grant for it, but it was the conversations that they had with Jason, and then they were like, "Wait a minute, okay, a real classroom of this matter would cost in the millions. How can we do this so that it's not one place?" And that's how they've decided to have each little piece everywhere, so.
When you're speaking of Jason, you're speaking of?
Say it again.
Who is Jason?
Jason.
Jason is with MSD, and I don't know his last name.
Caller.
He.
Okay.
Jason Caller, he's the CTE MSD innovation, like representative, liaison.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Okay, fantastic.
I have no questions other than echoing Mrs. Weaver's comment. Getting that grant, you got the money there, you better get it before somebody else. So, kudos to you guys to take the initiative to get, to get the money that you got.
We'll just, we'll all pile on, read his comments. Ditto on that one, too. But I do have, I've read an article, UMBC apparently has one of the most robust cybersecurity programs in the state, and their graduating class is all, like, I believe in November, had already, 100% of them had already secured jobs with companies. So, this is, you know, clearly, you know, and with Amazon moving all around and, you know, now not going into New York and maybe coming back to Maryland, it's just, or, you know, it's just, it's.
Yeah, I have a, to speak for the program, yeah, I have a student that actually is at the UMBC cyber program now, and because of going through my class and getting the certifications, you can actually graduate a whole semester early.
Great.
Because of it. So, yeah, so it's really neat to see the pipeline.
Yes.
And works.
Right. So, so excellent job.
Thank you.
I am glad it moved from the two-year program to the three-year program. So, when the students graduate from the three-year program, will they have certifications? And what will the certifications be?
They have options for a lot of, but.
Yes. Yeah, they have options. So, we, I prepare them based on the objectives for the industry certifications. And the two major partners that really feed the program and that are the most industry-recognized are Cisco and CompTIA. And so, we really built that around there. So, in the first year, I really prepare them. There's an intro to like a fundamental certification, then the A-plus, which is kind of the one that's really coveted by workforce as an entry level. My second year, they can prepare for what's called the CSENT, which is the Cisco Networking Certification, and then, and/or the Network Plus, which is the CompTIA version, a little bit broader of a certification. And then, now with the cybersecurity piece is that kind of last carrot is that Security Plus, which is really vital for students just to get into the workforce, especially around here with the Department of Defense and government. So, those are just the base form that I go on. I actually have 16 certifications total that are optional for students to do self-study or provide for, to test for, that my curriculum covers, so. And college credit, yes. I do get college articulation with CSM and Stafford University, and we're working with other universities to mirror that, so.
That's wonderful.
And it is, and I, and I think I have eyes in back of my head, because I'm sure Dave Howard's back there shaking his head. We did mention, and hopefully you understand, it's, this will be a separate entity, so this infrastructure won't, that's one of our biggest concerns were always that our infrastructure was connected to the school, and these, these kids are pretty, they're gonna be pretty good hackers, so they could have easily probably worked their way into our systems in some manner. So, this is a, not, what do you call it, standalone? I don't know what.
Isolated.
Isolated, yeah, isolated.
I, in one of the artifacts that you've provided us, you show, or someone shows, an IT Networking Academy suggested high school sequence of courses. Do you anticipate that we're gonna follow this sequence? I mean, in other words, I was talking with someone today who said that they have a child who's a sophomore, but knew that they would love to get involved in something like this. Is it too late? How, you mean, how?
Well, go ahead, Ms. Reagan.
One of the opportunities we do have is, we're hoping this three-year program fills, obviously, when they have, we have that full cohort. One of the opportunities we have implemented is that students can come in in their senior year and take the final course as an elective, as long as they have the prerequisite of AP Computer Science at the high schools. So, that, we're hoping it fills, but in the event, for whatever reason that it doesn't, we're trying to open those doors for other students to be able to come in and experience some of this and get some of that opportunity, even if they're not in the full three-year program.
And I'm glad, because one of the things we hear often is, or at least I do, is, "Wow, you waited until I was gone to do this." And so, I really applaud you for working through this and being one of the three counties that's going to be able to be on the ground floor of doing this. And, and I think we all understand that this is a field that is, that is desperately seeking people. And so, hats off to you, and I look forward to hearing about updates. I would like to see this put in as a pathway program, and.
Yeah, that, we could actually see that, and I was also just gonna mention to you, we could actually see that, much like the Homeland Security pathway that has been placed in because of the need of it. I think we may see a move toward this, that there will still be an IT piece, a two-year piece, and then a security, and you'll be able to choose one of those two. I can see the state making that move. I, I mean, I would hope that we could. You know how difficult it is to find teachers that can teach that kind of course, obviously, and a course, infrastructure of having a course, classroom for it and stuff. But I think you, I think, write down, I think the way you're thinking, this could actually be a cybersecurity pathway, CTE pathway.
I would, I would really love to see us pursue something like that. I think there are a lot of people out there who are interested, and, and there are certainly employers who are extremely interested. I look at the hospital, who, you know, has all kinds of problems.
I look at us. I look at us and recognize the value of the, of the program. So, really, we need to work with STEM, because what we're gonna have to do is we're gonna have to clone Mrs. Thompson. Because ultimately, and I do want to just take a moment, we're recognizing National Board Certified Teachers for the National Board Certification. The work that you do every single day to be as abreast as possible with all of this ever-changing, incredibly complex work is really to be applauded. You know, so thank you very much for working with whoever Jason may be and bringing, bringing this down here and making us recognize a model. And we're talking about Howard County with its billion-dollar budget. You know, we just kind of trudge along down here, and we, the strength that we have is the strength of our people, and the strength of our people, Ms. Thompson, is you. So, just thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the innovation grant and applicable budget, and the submittal of the grant budget to the Commissioners of St. Mary's County for their approval.
Do I have a second?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you very much. Motion's carried.
Thank you.
Ethical hacking in a sandbox you create, Mrs. Thompson. Good for you. Thank you.
All right, the recommended budget. This is the action item postponed from the snow day. Well, the discussion.
I was gonna say.
Glad you didn't do your job and move your.
Oh, my gosh, I.
See, he's, he's.
This is the only day you're gonna get away with it.
Yeah, he's person on his laurels here.
This is it. Next time, you're not gonna get away with it.
You know, we could probably have one of those science fair projects as.
An automated arm that just kind of brings it back over. Maybe I think he's trying to groom me to be able to.
So, if we clone Mrs. Thompson, we need to get like some robotic, put it on a Roomba.
So, before you, this evening, for the approval of the fiscal 2020 budget, you've received a very detailed budget presentation on the superintendent's budget in January, a work session, followed by a public hearing, receiving community comment. So, these slides are exactly what we presented at your last presentation, so I'll just quickly go through it. Bottom line, we're looking at a $224.5 million budget for FY 2020. That includes $110 million in local funding support, which is a $6.7 million increase, and $109 million in state funding support, or a $3.5 million increase. So, we've broken it down into three primary areas, the negotiating agreements and incremental increases of $7.9 million, $1.3 million for unfunded mandates for safety and security and mental health, and recommended enhancements for SMCPS in the amount of $992 million, so an overall increase to the FY 20 budget of $10.3 million. The negotiating agreements and incremental costs include the health insurance increase currently in your budget at 5%. We should be getting those numbers within the next couple of weeks, the exact numbers from CareFirst. For an item of $1.5 million, utility increase anticipated $414,000. Vice contracts and fuel, $654,000. And of course, the step, COLA, and fixed charges associated with that of $5.4, $5.3 million, for a total of $7.9 million. And then we have all of the mandates associated with safety, security, and mental health. Our psychologists and counselors, the school social worker, mental health coordinator and safety and security coordinator were both incorporated in the current year's budget via budget adjustment approved by you earlier. Safety and security assistance, an IT project coordinator, security specialist, physical security systems, and increases in three additional areas within safety and security for overtime materials, as well as contracted temp agency, totaling $1.3 million. So, we're now up to a $5.7 million funding necessary to fund the priorities one and two from the county commissioners. And then the recommended enhancements for St. Mary's County Public Schools include the special education IEP chair, five teachers, a nurse, reclassifications, as well as internships for our students, totaling $992,000. So, the total increase once again is $10.3 million for FY 2020, and local funding increases requested $6.7 million. So, your approval is requested today. That will then be submitted to the county commissioners for consideration. They will take it and incorporate it in their budget for April 23rd at their public hearing. And May 14th, the commissioners will provide the final direction on their operating budget. And May 22nd, the Board of Education will be expected to adopt your budget. So, at this time, we request your approval of the fiscal year 2020 budget.
I have no questions, thank you.
No questions. Thank you for the presentation.
No questions, thank you.
None, thank you.
No questions, but I want to thank the superintendent for putting people first.
We always must.
All right, may I have a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the recommended budget for fiscal year 2020 as presented, and forward to the county, to the Commissioners of St. Mary's County for the, their review and approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, literacy coaches overview to the group that's been waiting very patiently.
Yes, they have, and thank you.
Okay. Hello again.
Hello.
We are thrilled to present the literacy coaches to you this evening. It's been a long time coming. So, just to give you some background, the literacy coaches were born as a result of the Striving Readers Grant, which you will be hearing about momentarily. They are to support teachers in implementing disciplinary literacy, working with teachers on what literacy means in each content area. And the main focus is on tier-one interventions with teachers. Tier-one interventions are interventions that happen within the classroom. So, really working with teachers on how to support the literacy in their content with the students in their classrooms. So, unfortunately, Lynn Treherne, Patricia Lynn Treherne, could not be with us tonight because she is actually facilitating a parent session as part of her role as literacy coach on conscious discipline. So, she is, she is facilitating a parent training on conscious discipline tonight. But just to give you sort of a background of what she does, Lynn supports birth through second grade. She develops connections with agencies outside of the school system. So, just to tell you a little bit, she works with the Early Childhood Action Committee from, for St. Mary's County, the Judy Center Steering Committee. She connects with Promise Resource Center, the Maryland Office of Childcare. So, she does a lot with parents and working with the younger, younger children. As part of her professional development, she works with teachers on IGDS, universal screening to support, it's a pre-K assessment to support pre-K students, conscious discipline training, as I said, which is where she is tonight, imagined learning training with our teachers. And really, she works to, with the targeted schools that Ms. Pepper will talk a little bit about. She builds relationships with staff and really supports them through foundation implementation or other curricular needs.
And next we have?
Hello, everyone. I'm Jamie Pepper, so I am one of the literacy coaches. I'm supporting grades K through five, working closely with Courtney DeVorek, who's the supervisor of elementary ALA instruction, and Lynn Treherne. We do have the overlap of K through two. Prior to this, I was an IRT at Duke Elementary, so I've reached out to my IRT friends in other buildings and started getting myself into schools by attending their data meetings. And as we reviewed their data, needs popped up here and there. And so, then I was able to go into teachers' classrooms and model lessons and help them get resources, provide professional development. I'm working with first-year teachers. I'm working with veteran teachers. I'm working with special education teachers. And it's, it's all been very well-received, so it's been a great start with it. So, I'm happy to be in this position.
And we have three secondary literacy coaches. So they're gonna come up and introduce themselves one at a time.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Stone. I'm the secondary schools literacy coach that supports Chautauqua High School, Leonardown Middle School, and Margaret Brent Middle School. Prior to this, I was a science teacher at Chautauqua High School. One year-long initiative that we've been working on even, I think the two of us were still teachers before we took over the roles as literacy coaches, was a development, administration, and analysis of a performance-based assessment for ninth-grade students in the content areas of ELA, English Language Arts, Science, and Social Studies. So we helped other teachers along with the content supervisors to create these performance-based assessments, to administer them in the schools. And then now, actually this Friday, we're having a conversation, bringing the teachers back to see how it went, what kinds of initiatives and kind of next steps that we can work with the students in those three content areas in terms of reading and writing. One piece of data that our PARC data came back with for our students in the middle and high school, where that our students need support in informational text, having to actually read it, access it, give textual evidence. So these performance-based assessments in the three areas came about with teachers and supervisors and kind of analyzing that data and then the next steps for the following year to kind of gear those specifically towards the three content areas, the three disciplines, so that students in the English Language Arts classes, kind of how they are supposed to be writing and accessing text, in social studies courses for the high school assessment in government, and then in science for the MISA, the Integrated Science Assessment. So kind of that is the progression from this year to next year that we're working on. So in terms of kind of support and professional development, that's one main focus that we've been doing this year for all three of the literacy coaches in secondary schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Waite, the literacy coach at Great Mills High School. I also support Spring Ridge Middle School and Esperanza. Kelly Bridges and I, she also supports Esperanza since they both feed into either Leonardown High School or Great Mills High School. I'm gonna kind of piggyback off what Stephanie was saying about the PBAs. One of the things that we were able to do with that is collect data off of Unify. And one of the amazing conversations that I've been able to have with teachers at the high school level and middle school level is the student's PBA score in all three of those assessments and how they align to their PARC scores. And then we can have really rich conversations with the students about their own performance and getting them to really own the seriousness of these assessments and kind of figuring out what skills they needed or were lacking in those assessments, looking at it across the board and seeing if they were lacking the same skill in each of those. And then we can go in and kind of tailor a little instruction for them and give them little tips and hints on how to improve their reading and writing. So that's been great to have those conversations with teachers, with students. And sometimes it's the aha, like, I just need to change that. Yes, that's it. And you're great. You're golden. So that's been an amazing opportunity to have with teachers and students. The other thing, we can go in and kind of focus on universal design for learning. And if a student is struggling to obtain some content, or as Stephanie mentioned, the text-based evidence, is really trying to find a strategy that helps that student. So getting to know the students, getting to know their learning, and then providing them with different options for them to kind of use as a toolkit when they're struggling. So the students not only are seeing their data and are being connected to that more, they're also getting ideas on how to fix their reading and writing. And so hopefully, we'll go forward and see lots of progress from this. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Bridges. I'm the literacy coach supporting Leonardown High School, Esperanza Middle School, and Leonardown Middle School. I'm gonna elaborate a little bit more too on the UDL initiatives. We're also supporting teachers in implementing what's called Goalbook and Pathway software. It's a software tool that you can easily find strategies and resources to help those struggling students, especially with literacy initiatives. So one thing I've been doing is meeting, again, the focus has been on ninth grade right now, meeting with ninth-grade teachers to use this software and to help them differentiate their classes. That's especially important as we've moved, we don't have standard CM, now we have just one on-grade level group. So we have a lot of diverse learners in one classroom, and teachers need supports to reach these students, especially when it comes to literacy. So that's been another one of our initiatives that we've been taking on. Another aspect of our role is co-teaching and modeling lessons, and that's probably the most fun part of our role, is getting in there and working with teachers in the classroom to implement these strategies. One example, I've been working with teachers who wanna hold writing conferences with their students. They wanna sit down and have personal conversations with their students. That's really hard to do with, you know, 30 high schoolers in a room. So I'll go in and maybe do a little mini lesson while that teacher is working with other students, just to add that kind of flexibility for them. I've also gone into science classrooms to help support writing instruction, modeling for the science teachers, how they can implement disciplinary literacy, how they can give feedback to student writing, and showing them that it's a, reading and writing is an accessible tool in all classes that these students and teachers are in.
You don't have to leave.
You can stay right up there.
If I can just speak on behalf of the entire Department of Curricular Instruction, we are very proud of the five literacy coaches that are working with us. They are all master teachers. They're all highly respected. They come from a variety of content areas, from science, childhood, early childhood, English Language Arts. So they really are welcomed in teachers' classrooms with their ideas. And, I mean, they just breathe life into everything they do, and we're just thrilled to have them on board. No?
You took all?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You did all my stuff? I was gonna, for the record, I wrote down, so I was gonna say all of that stuff, 'cause, yeah, that's it.
Find some new words. Ask a literacy coach.
But I do, and I don't wanna step on the, but I do wanna say, you know, the, first of all, thank you all for your incredible patience and that this grant was received and you were identified as the master teachers that you are. And we, many, you had to wait because how could, you're all irreplaceable. And that was, that has been an absolute challenge. But that, when we talk about what makes the system better, it really is, it's all about people, it's about how you invest in people, to the extent to which we can exercise influence over pre-service to help our institutes of higher education really prepare people before they come here. But realistically, once they're here, they're ours. And so then it becomes in-service, and in-service is best done when it's embedded, and it's best done when it's modeled and co-taught. And so, I mean, you hit all the words. The only, you are all exceptionally credible. The teachers know you have walked the walk. You know it. You can perform in front of a classroom. You can put together assessment. You can make the Unify system sing. And that is something at the secondary level that we really need to invest our time in because the, when we look to and model after what our elementary folk are doing and our middle school folk are, we recognize the incredible power of that analytical tool system. So you just, you are the fabulous five. Thank you for your patience. I can't, I know that you're now getting into that meaty bit of the work. I can't wait to see what the next two or three years will yield. So just thanks. And you did.
Well, no, fabulous five. I'm picking t-shirts.
Oh, yeah, get that. Yeah, Fab Five.
I do have a question. You talked about supporting English Language Arts, Science, and Social Studies, but I didn't hear math. And so could somebody tell me about, is there any plan to support literacy in math?
So that might have to wait for the grant. The literacy coaches have to, they are within the bounds of the grant.
Right.
So literacy within math is very important, and our math supervisors talk about it frequently, word walls, word walls, and moving from there, yes. Currently, we are working with English Language Arts, Science, Social Studies, those contents. There may be application, but again, it's within the confines of the grant. And so that's not what we're doing right now.
This particular grant, you all have made it sing as far as what you've been able to extract from a narrow focus to be a much wider and a much more comprehensive system view. I think it really is. It's fantastic. So the next time they throw out a grant, we'll drag in the math supervisors.
I look at, you know, word problems and being able to express how you solved a problem using, you know, writing about it. And so that's why it struck me that there is that literacy component there. But I would imagine that through a lot of the professional development you do, that there's sort of a bleed over in that.
Oh, absolutely. When you're talking about PBAs and you're talking within the science field, of course, there's gonna be a major mathematical component to it, so.
I can speak to that just a little bit in some of the work I've done at Leonardown High School because on their math assessment, students are expected to write and elaborate. And that's, you know, a struggle across the board, getting students to elaborate. So I have attended some of their data meetings just to offer some strategies and advice for that. I send out as part of Ms. Mills' weekly update, I do my own little literacy coach corner where I offer little tips to parents. So I try to include like vocabulary, reading strategies that are applicable to all content areas, not necessarily just those. Because we even talked about, you know, what we can do in foundations of technology, bringing in articles for students to read in their in-house class. So it's really, it is about meeting the school's needs too, where we can fit that in.
Great. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, you guys had a wonderful presentation, and it's so nice to see people who are passionate about what they're doing, 'cause it definitely reflects, you know, what you're doing and how you're working towards where you wanna go. So I'd just like to thank you all for being here and doing what you do.
Thank you.
My question is for Ms. Pepper. You go into the classroom, and now do you observe the teacher and kind of see where she needs assistance? And is it for the classroom in general? Or is it, are you looking at specific children that she can assist?
So what I've done so far is I've gone in to help model lessons. If a teacher is interested in, Daily Five is a big frame, format that we're doing right now. So if they're interested in the aspect of that, I've gone in to help model lessons. I have gone in to, you know, like teachers might say, I just want you to come in and see what I'm doing and then, and then give me some advice. I have not been observing specific children. I've been working with teachers and their whole classes. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
It does. I just wanted like, I guess, a little bit more clarification on like, kind of your role in the classroom.
Right. I've, after attending those data meetings, whatever comes out of that data meeting, people have said, we just wanna hear more about Daily Five. We wanna hear more about guided reading. So I've provided professional, little mini professional development sessions for those things. Some teachers know exactly what they want, like, you know, I need help with work on writing with my kids. So I've gone in and modeled lessons for work on writing. I've watched them do work on writing and given them feedback. So it's just kind of whatever sort of pop, right now, that's how it's presented itself, whatever sort of popped up out of those data meetings as being the need of the teacher and then me going in to support them in that.
Okay. Thank you.
And I don't know if it helped, so the literacy coaches, their primary focus is to support teachers with the literacy, so not to maybe identify students. But if a teacher were to identify a student who was having struggles in a certain area, then the literacy coach and the teacher could work together on different strategies to implement.
Absolutely. That hasn't popped up yet, but if it does, I will do that.
The only question I have is, I think earlier you were talking about addressing age groups like from birth to pre-K. What do you do when you're, when you're working with a child that's just been born, there's no cognitive abilities? What would you be doing there?
Well, that's Lynn Treherne's specialty, and she's not here tonight. But I do know that it would be working more with the parents and the caregivers at that point of, you know, the importance of reading to your child and things like that. I can't speak to it specifically, but it would be working more with the adults that are dealing with the infant than obviously the infant itself.
We've talked about this before. There's been a lot of studies that show that children that are read to at an early age and do much better academically as a, as a advance in the school system.
And in fact, in one of our meetings for the Striving Readers Grant, they were talking about a program that I feel was, I don't know if it's still in place at the hospital, but like, after you had a baby, like you went home with a couple of books or something like that. So if it isn't still in place, they were gonna revisit that or support that in some, in some way.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Well, I see you as exemplary teachers, and I see you as teachers of teachers, and you do the continuing from birth through 12. You look at the data, you discover where the needs are. It's prescriptive for the individual student. You find out what that individual student needs based on their test scores. And then you find strategies and resources to help that student with different methods because students need reading and writing in all disciplines. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
I thank you for working with the teachers to help them become better at their craft and reach a broader array of students in their needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Hall, Ms. DeVorek, Ms. Glott, well, now we hear about the comprehensive plan.
Right. So if those are the coaches, this is the playbook.
Hello, everybody. We are very excited to be here tonight to present our comprehensive literacy plan. So as you know, we received the Striving Readers Grant earlier this year, at the end of last year. And in order to qualify for the Striving Readers Grant, we had to do a comprehensive needs assessment for our county. And then we were able to use that data and information from the comprehensive needs assessment to create our comprehensive literacy plan. And through that, we determined that there are five kind of areas that we wanted to focus on, which are presented in front of you now. We also modeled our plan after MSDEs because we felt like we should be modeling what the state is doing as well. And just keep in mind that the plan is quite comprehensive, so tonight is just gonna be an overview of key details. So the first area of focus is key one, our instructional leadership. And this is really focusing on developing instructional leaders, principals, teachers, anyone within the school system. And our goal is to create instructional leaders who are knowledgeable on those evidence-based literacy practices and what is best for students and are able to share that knowledge with others. And this is where our literacy coaches really come into play.
So I'm gonna give you a shout-out for the early childhood literacy coach tonight. It is Lynn Treherne, and she's not here because she is running a parent. And there are actually teachers that showed up tonight for a conscious discipline workshop. So Lynn is a master teacher, just like all of the other literacy coaches. She is early childhood trained and credentialed, and she has the experience teaching all early childhood grades, pre-K, K1 and 2, for the last 25 years. She's wonderful.
And you all have met Jamie Pepper tonight, and we're very lucky to have her as our K-5 literacy coach. She's also a master teacher. And I just have to say, it's amazing to see the impact that she's already made. I've had students and teachers make comments. I was doing an op, nobody wants me to come into their classroom, right? Because I'm evaluative. But having someone be able to give that non-evaluative feedback, I've had a teacher who's been here for years just kind of gloat and just say how amazing Jamie is. I was doing an observation and heard, overheard. I was doing an observation and heard, overheard students talking about, remember when Ms. Pepper came in? She was teaching us about these strategies. So you can really, you can already see the impact that she's having.
So in secondary, you met the secondary coaches as well. And they talked a lot about their main focus really is on that disciplinary literacy. And they have done amazing work. They are really the missing link in this whole, you know, vertical chain from elementary to middle to high. We've always had strong support in elementary, middle. We finally have it in high school. It is, they are just a breath of fresh air, they're just amazing. They're also working on those transitions between 5 and 6 and they talked about supporting middle school, which they totally do. Today, they facilitated a transition meeting with 8th and 9th grade English teachers talking about kind of those gaps when kids leave 8th grade and because 8th grade teachers are getting ready to make recommendations for next year. And they, I mean, they planned it all, they facilit, I just showed up and, you know, hmm. It was great, so, yeah, it was, it was great. So it's, they really are, I can't say enough about the job that they're doing.
Then key two is looking at strategic professional learning. And this is really focusing on creating a highly effective and sustainable system of professional development. And then we know that our PD needs to be needs-based and support the continuum of literacy instruction.
So for early childhood, one of the conditions of the grant was that we survey early childhood teachers, but we also survey the entire early childhood partnership. So we went to the Early Childhood Action Committee, that's part of local management, the Head Start Policy Council, the Judy Center Steering Committee and just other early childhood advocates in the community. And resoundingly, what came back on that survey was we need to really address social emotional learning, particularly from birth, because there's a huge body of evidence that says if children have those good social foundations, they develop executive functioning skills, which leads directly to reading. And so that is how we wrote that portion of the professional development in the grant. So what Mrs. Terhern is doing is really leading that work. And we systematically started, when Dr. Smith said a late start, Mrs. Terhern started on January 14th. So she's in there already. But we have systematically decided with that start that we would have her begin with pre-K, then we work into the transition from pre-K to K. And so up through, and then she'll meet with Ms. Pepper to overlap on the first and second grade pieces. And part of the results of the survey was that we would have pre-K parent and family engagement workshops. Again, there's a huge body of research that needed to be cited in the grant that supports that and our people want it. And, you know, tonight at the Tech Center, there are parents there, there is childcare, there is dinner and people are showing up for these things. So it's good.
And for K through 5, we're really using a lot of the structures that we have in place in St. Mary's County Public School, but really just thinking about how we can utilize them to better promote those literacy practices and looking at the continuum of literacy instruction from that development of phonemic awareness to those comprehension strategies. So we still have team mentoring in place that meets with our new teachers to provide them with support, school-based PLCs and we're really working with them to look at data and to make those database decisions in their planning and instruction and to be collaboratively with each other. We have our instructional resource teachers and our literacy coaches who we utilize to support and strengthen all of the literacy programs across all content areas. They're the ones in there modeling, helping teachers with those strategies. Many of our teachers have gone through the formative assessment for Maryland educators, the FAME, which looks at using formative assessment to again, make those instructional decisions and then also continuing the use of peer coaching. But again, with that focus on those literacy practices.
So in secondary, and I think you'll see this pattern, my slides pretty much mirror Courtney's and that's very purposeful because we really wanted to have the same focus and make it really consistent from elementary all the way through high school. This is really, I think Colleen Gill is still here. This is really her purview. She has got her hands really in this, not only this plan, but also the Striving Readers Grant. So she really does a lot to facilitate the team mentoring and this vertical collaboration, FAME and the peer coaching. So if you have questions about this, I hope she's still back there.
Excuse me, what does FAME, what does that mean?
It's Formative Assessment for Maryland Educators. So it's a CPD, a continuing professional development course that teachers can pursue and learn again, how to use different types of assessment to really drive instruction and learn about their students. So key three is looking at the continuity of standards-based instruction. And this is really focused on ensuring that all of our students have access to evidence-based instructional practices that are aligned to the Maryland College and Career Ready Standards.
So in early childhood, we're going to begin at birth and we're going to go up through the early childhood component. So we are offering a lot of parent and provider workshops. And Mrs. Terhern, when she gets finished tonight, we have the conscious discipline trainer that's doing a specialized training for the childcare providers and the Judy Center partners. We have 60 people coming to Lexington Park Library tomorrow. And I'm very proud to say, those people that are coming tomorrow are going to get Core of Knowledge Hours, which is credentialing for their childcare. So there's really an incentive for them to come tomorrow so that we can make sure that we are aligned from birth all the way up through grade 12. In the early childhood component, we are really starting to make sure that our pre-K standards align and mesh beautifully with kindergarten on up through, through all the grades. We want to make sure that our programs, even in the very early learning years, are aligning with college and career readiness standards and any materials that we've selected are evidence-based and on approved and recommended list. And we're really going to work hard on those transitions and Mrs. Terhern is going to lead the way with that.
K through 5, in 2015, we moved towards standards-based instruction and standards-based report cards. That's what SBRC stands for. So right now, they're in full swing in K through 3 and we have every intention of moving forward in 4th and 5th grade as well.
Pre-K 2.
And pre-K 2, thanks Kelly. We have also worked really hard, within the past couple of years, we have new instructional resources for the elementary level. So we're really working hard to make sure that our curriculum maps are, again, is standards-based and really focusing on that standard and how we can use those instructional resources to support instruction. Again, that collaborative planning of instruction through content-based PLCs and promoting all of the resources available through the Maryland State Department of Education to really help teachers deepen their understanding of the Maryland College and Career Ready Standards for ELA, to know exactly what those standards mean and what those students, their students should be able to do. So we're really focusing on those resources to build that teacher capacity.
No, it's okay. So I think it was over a year ago, two years ago, I stood here and presented all these new materials. So we're in year two of implementation of Springboard, Pearson, and Advanced Language and Literature in high school. So we are still figuring it out, we're still working, developing curriculum. The curriculum is done, but as any good teacher is going to do, they're going to take it and make it their own and massage it. And luckily, we have, because the Lit coaches are 11-month, we're going to have that month in June with them. And our plan really is to bring teachers in and to look at, just massage the curriculum and just making it even better than it already is. And I'm really pleased with these materials. I think teachers are happy, students are happy, I hope. But they're very rich and they're meeting our needs for sure, so.
Key four is looking at our comprehensive system of assessments, which focuses on ensuring that SMCPS has a system of assessments that can be used for that strategic data-informed decision-making in order to meet the needs of all of our learners.
So in early childhood, we are beginning the universal screening to really make sure that we have a good look at who is likely to have a reading difficulty from as early as possible. And we have implemented this year, the Individual Growth and Development Indicators, we call ITDs for early literacy. It's a norm test, it's similar in the administration to DIBELS. The teachers are really liking it. It's efficient, it's fast and it's giving them really good information. We've also revised our risk factor assessment for when we open up the pre-K and Head Start application process, we're taking a look at that. And then we're really working at creating developmentally appropriate assessments using skilled observation with rubrics. Because we know when they're little, you really can tell a lot by watching and interacting. So we just want to make sure that that's a very consistent process, sort of like in medicine. So you really do skilled observation.
I think that's true of any age as well. In elementary, we're continuing our universal screening process for K through 5 using the DIBELS assessment, which is the dynamic indicators of basic early literacy skills. Through a separate grant, we're working with the National Center on Improving Literacy to really shore up our universal screening system. So we brought teachers in, retrained them on how to administer DIBELS and they've met in universal screening teams to really look at the data and determine which students are struggling at risk for reading failure and come up with strategies and supports and interventions to support those students. So it's nice how these two grants marry one another. We also use, you know, various formative and summative assessments. Of course, we have PARC for grades 3 through 5 and MESA for science and KRI in, for kindergarten. But then there's county-based assessments as well. Since I have started this position, I'm in the process of rewriting the assessments to make sure that they are aligned to the standards and the rigor that's expected for students. And so we have increased the number of PCRs or pros constructed responses. Actually, getting students to respond to text and writing has been a big focus of our assessment system this year.
So in secondary, because it is year two of the new curriculum materials, we added unit assessments from these materials this year, just to give us a little bit more formative data. We always had the pre's and the mids that are more county-based, everybody takes the same one. The unit assessments are course-based, which I think is really helpful for teachers because it's aligned exactly to the content that they just delivered. The Lit coaches talked about the PBAs. So this year, we did design tasks for social studies and science and they mirror what kids are going to see on PARC. So we did those in 6, 7, 8 and 9. So they really have done more work than they actually share with you. 7 and 9 are really our focus groups that we're working with this year. So that's been pretty amazing to see and like they said, they went in with kids and had them look at, they're writing on the science one, they're writing on social studies and writing on English. And it's been amazing, just the aha moments kids have had, because writing is so different in every single one of those content areas. And it's just, the formative pieces of it, and there's, you know, it's not held against them. They, they're revising it, they're going back and reworking some of that writing. It's just been really eye-opening and very, very meaningful and powerful assessment. And you don't normally hear that with assessment.
And finally, key 5 looks at ensuring that all students have access to our core literacy program, but that we have systems in place to identify students who may need more support and provide them with strategic and targeted intervention and enrichment.
So in early childhood, you'll see how it's spiraling through the entire literacy plan and spiraling through the coaches' work. We do have a universal screening in place, which is really very impressive that we are starting at 4 and every student up through grade 2. We also have our professional development related to executive functioning. We're doing conscious discipline, as I've mentioned before. And then we're using the data that we're collecting from those skilled observations and from ITDs to really differentiate instruction at the youngest level. And our literacy coach in early childhood is really working with staff to do that in the just few weeks that she's been here. Before I, we go to elementary, I just want to invite all of you tomorrow, if you're in the neighborhood of Lexington Park Elementary, from 8:30 till 4, there will be a fabulous conscious discipline training and you are most welcome to join us.
There's a lot going on with peer intervention and instruction in elementary. So we definitely want to do more with promoting that universal design for learning and that core instruction and making sure that teachers are aware of all the different supports that they can put in place for students, for all students, not just students who are struggling. And this is also where the Goalbook Pathways ties in as well, which the literacy coaches talked about. We have our universal screening for our students in, well, pre-K through 5th grade. We, through this grant too, we've had the opportunity to pilot Imagine Learning, which is an online system that students will log in and they'll take a test and it'll kind of create an individualized learning pathway for them. But the power in that is that the data that the teachers get, they're called action area tools, that they can then log in, look at the action area tools and then the teachers will pull those students for that targeted instruction. So it's not just that they're sitting online on a computer. That teacher intervention is definitely key to that. So we are piloting that with targeted 2nd grade students in a handful of elementary schools based on data and teacher input. We are also working with the Department of Special Education to make sure that we are kind of sharing up our approved elementary reading interventions and providing more, just an overview of the interventions for teachers so that they know like what each intervention targets and which student should, it would be appropriate for. And then also looking at that progress monitoring and response to intervention. So just because a student, we want to make sure that students in interventions we're monitoring to see if they're making that progress. Because if they're not, then we need to go back to the drawing board and come up with a new plan. So, and we're doing that through our Performance Matters Unify system.
Thanks, again, same thing. So in secondary, we don't have as many of those tier 2 and tier 3 interventions. So we really do rely more on tier 1 with UDL, Goalbook Pathways. And we've been really fortunate to have Susie Fowler, who's went into all the high schools in the fall and worked with 9th grade teachers, went in and watched them using Goalbook Pathways, gave them some feedback. Because that's the, I think that's been funded through a grant as well, right? Like a different grant. And then we do look at our digital resources with Pearson, Springboard, ALO as differentiation tools as well. Because a lot of what's in that digital platform is meant to differentiate instruction. So we've been doing ongoing support with our vendors and with us, teachers that are really skilled at it. So that's just an ongoing piece of the work that we're doing in terms of the interventions.
Mary Hunt.
Questions, comment?
We had a very thorough presentation, so I have no questions for you. You did a wonderful job, thank you.
I really like the idea that you are catching these children very early on and working in partnership with daycare providers and with other people. Because that's, that's really important, especially when their brain is developing, to, to work on things. Thank you.
There's so much research that shows that if we don't get students reading by 3rd grade, then they're never going to be on track. The amount of interventions and resources that you would have to put forth is astronomical. So we're really trying to target them as early as possible.
Go ahead.
My question is based on how much time are we spending on assessment versus how much are we teaching? Now, I'm the messenger here, so don't blame me, okay? I'm not a dinosaur. And what Mrs. Weaver said, I agree 100%. We have to do intervention. Having said that, a number of my friends are concerned that we need to put as much time as possible on the three Rs. And it kind of worked for them, it worked for me. Didn't have, I didn't have all this stuff. So in terms of this assessment, Dr. Jeffers talked at length about this a couple of months ago. I was so impressed about the data that they're getting and the information that they're getting, but at what cost? So could you address that? I know you're teaching the teachers.
I can certainly speak from the early childhood aspect and then roll on. We are really looking at a whole child philosophy and letting children be children. So some of the assessments that we are doing are really based on observation and scoring them with a rubric and making sure that we're really consistent in how we score. The ITDs test, you know, each time they do it, it gets faster.
Yep.
10 minutes a child?
10, 15 minutes a child, yep.
So three times a year. You know, so we're really being mindful of that. And as we work with the providers and as we work with the early childhood teachers, we're reinforcing that when they're young like that, every 15 or 20 minutes, they need a different activity, a different transition to something else in a very secure environment. Because that's really the, the amount of time that they can attend. So they are not taking, the little people are not taking paper and pencil tests all day. That, that's not happening.
And please also remember that a couple of years ago, the legislature stepped in and put a limit on us. And so no school system in the state can go beyond 2% of the student's time in assessments. So there were, there was voluminous documentation to show what tests were being given, how much time it was taking, at what levels they were being given. And then from all of that, it was distilled down and... And then from all of that, it was distilled down in this determination that no more than 2%. So, you know, it is certainly something that is and has been on people's radar. So I think you can assure your friends that we are staying within the bounds of that 2%.
And that's the thing that we really worked hard at, is we needed to have a universal screener to take a look at, you know, literacy problems down the line. We also needed to write a language and literacy evidence-based measure into striving readers to win. They're the same assessment for little people. So we really looked at, we don't need to choose two assessments. We can find one that will serve multiple purposes.
And Michelle and I have definitely worked with Dr. Fancella and Dr. Jeffers to make sure that our assessments are within that 2% and constantly looking at them to make sure that they are providing teachers with valuable information, and we're not just assessing students to assess students. We want the data that teachers get from the assessments to be actionable and to have a direct impact on their instruction. So that's our goal.
Yeah, and I would second that. And that's why our focus is on formative, not summative, because it's in real time. Like I said, the work that they're doing with students, like here's, let's take a look at the writing. This is what you got on that, and how do we make this better? And how is that going to help you down the road? If it's not actionable, it's not worth it. So we really have worked hard to make sure that the tests and the assessments that we're giving countywide, we can't control how many assessments teachers give beyond that, but that they are really meaningful and that the data and the conversations that come out of it are going to benefit students.
Thank you.
My only question is, okay, so my understanding is that the testing for a child that might be identified as special education begins in second grade, correct? Or somewhat prior, like, you know, like that's when they go through the whole battery of tests to see if they are going to be in a special education program. So if you have a student that is struggling from pre-K through second grade, how do you identify that and how do you coordinate with the special education teacher? Because does the job all fall to you, or at that point, are you pulling other resources in? Does that make sense?
Yeah, just give me a moment to process. So we start with the universal screening school. And what that does is it allows us to just kind of, it kind of gives us like an alarm, like there might be something going on with this kiddo. And then from there, we might do other formative assessments to really kind of pinpoint whether or not there is, and not even a learning disability, but we just know that the student is struggling with reading for some reason. Why are they struggling with reading? So then, you know, we look at our core program and think about what supports we can, that's where we start. And then we might provide that student with intervention with instructional resource teacher to support them. We're going to monitor them. So I don't think there's anything that really says that special education testing doesn't start till second grade, but what we would like to make sure is that we have given students access to education. So that means, you know, kindergarten's usually their first time in school, so that they've had that access, that they've been provided with that core instruction, that they've been provided with supports. And usually, once there's some evidence that all of these supports have been in place, then that's when they'll go to that PSD table or the IEP table.
But if I have a child that starts second grade that's not reading on grade level, then what have you done prior to that to get them to advance more quickly? Or what are you going to do to continue to do that in order, do you understand what I'm saying? Because there's always children that are falling behind. So are those, I mean, and I know that's who you're working with, but yet how difficult is it for you to get them caught up? Or will they ever be caught up in then working on a grade level?
I would say if we can get them early enough, then we can put all those supports and interventions in place to help get them caught up. It's when we're seeing that the supports and interventions aren't working, then that's kind of when something...
And the rationale with this approach with executive functioning, social foundations in the early years will hopefully mitigate that, so they will become more ready to learn as they get into the school, those early school years. We also, when, you know, a pediatrician detects a problem, you know, at the hospital,
We provide special and services that begin at birth. That's why we say birth through, we're not giving educational services to children who aren't identified pre-K. You know, that is, you know, so a child that, a special education student could be identified quite early. What you're talking about is by the time we get to the end of second grade, they should be identified and remediated and intervened. And that's the system that we're working from. There isn't, there won't be a child who's been with us in pre-K, K, grade one, grade two. It doesn't come as a surprise. They're not identified in second grade. That's just what would be formalized.
I've heard from parents that there is some sense of frustration, because, you know, as a parent, you know if your child is struggling in school. But yet, the resources, you know, either there aren't enough of them or they don't know how to get them. So it just seems to be that there is this pushback between administration and the parents in order for them to quote-unquote "fight to get their child where they need to be." And that's just, you know, with this whole program up and running, I think a lot of that will be, I think that was the piece that we were missing, right? Because everyone's like, oh, we'll just wait until you're tested, or, you know. And even though we're still doing the testing, until you have that sheet of paper that they're on a 504 plan, I think some parents felt that they weren't getting all of the resources that they could.
And so our hope is ideally, if you think about the tiers of instructional support, our core instructional program should be enough to support 80% of our students. And really, that's where our focus needs to be. So I think through the professional development, through the focus on good evidence-based teaching practices, through making sure that the resources we have, we're using them to support the Maryland College and Career Ready Standards. I have a good feeling that we're going to get there. I think there's a lot of good things in place, kind of in pockets, and we're kind of bringing it all together.
Right, and that's right. Just by listening to this between the coaches in here, I think that's what's bringing it all together. And now it's just, it's more complete, rather than picking pieces from different...
It's a comprehensive literacy plan that has five key elements. It starts with great people who give great professional development, that gives great instruction, that gives great assessment, that informs really great interventions. These are the fabulous five, the other fabulous five keys. So together, it's like this. It's like it all works together.
There's your t-shirt, Colleen.
Oh, my goodness.
No, we're really excited and passionate about this work. I think this is really some of the most thoughtful work that we've done as a system. It's so big, and it goes down to, not to use an Alex Jaffers term, but like granularity. It's all those little, it's those little pieces, so that when a teacher is giving a formative assessment in a classroom, we have aligned a tool that gathers incredibly informative data that can be drawn all the way back up the system to inform larger programs. It's very, I'm really excited. Now we have everybody in place. We have a really good plan. We've done a PowerPoint. I can't wait to see, you know, where we are in the next several years. And I think that people that may have had frustration in the past, if they give us a true, open mind and a real, true look, they're going to be amazed at what we share with them.
Right, and that's right.
Please come tomorrow. Watch the daycare provider workshop if you can.
The only comment I want to add is...
You already had comments.
No. I'm just getting started. We've got till 9:00. Oh, homework. Okay. I'll be brave. The, I think was mentioned earlier about the kids learning at different levels. And I don't know, I'm not a trained specialist, but sometimes kids are slow learners and they develop at a later age. Is there any way to discern between that and say somebody that needs special help? You know, they're just...
Sure. Well, with the youngest people, you know, there is a developmental range. Not unlike, you know, a young child, and we have several nurses on the board. I think you'll understand what I'm saying. You know, there's a typical range of walking from like seven or nine months to 15 months. And, you know, if you're in that range, okay, things are moving. You're approaching the next milestone where you need to be. Early acquisition of language and literacy and social skills that lead to reading follow a similar pathway. There is a range. When we see children starting to get out of the range, then we need to intervene. And as Mrs. Dvorak said, for little people, about 80% of them are going to be in the range. And when they're not, we have to craft the experiences and the opportunities and the right support for our teachers to give them that opportunity to get them back into the range. And so we're watching that really from birth on. And, you know, there are going to be pediatricians in this work with our youngest people. So I think that should mitigate some of that that you're talking about.
Okay. Do you two have anything to quickly add?
I think everything's been said.
I actually do.
Go ahead.
I think you were going to hit on the nurse point.
I was going to express gratitude, because my daughter was a struggling reader. And I was, and so I know personally what those gaps are like and how, over time, the system has put supports in place. You know, I was lucky because Mrs. Hall was principal, and I went to her and said, I've been telling people for years their issues.
That's what I'm talking about. Right there.
Nobody will agree, you know, I tell them and they go, no, I've never seen that. And then a week later, I get a call, you're right, I did notice that. But because she was quiet and didn't cause issues in the classroom, she was somebody who was overlooked. And by the time Mrs. Hall came in and was able to work on some supports for her, she had developed some strategies. So when she was tested, she didn't test out as needing special education. And yet, there were identified gaps. And so I was just really fortunate, because there were really talented teachers who stepped in and were able to do some of these things. What I'm really pleased by now is that this kind of work has been identified and prioritized and put into place. Because what I really hope is that no other mother has to sit up here and say, my child struggled, and how difficult it was for everyone in the family. And so I just have to express my gratitude, because, but for those special people, you know, it would have had a very different outcome. And so I believe that this comprehensive program is what is needed. It is what has been perhaps the missing piece to pull everything, sort of the keystone to pull everything together. And, you know, it is true that there is that continuum, and there are kids who are going to come in early and be stellar. And there are other kids who are going to struggle for a variety of reasons, not necessarily needing special education, but rather having a different learning style. And making sure that we are addressing that learning style, because education is not a one-size-fits-all medium. And so, over the time that I have served as a board member, I have seen just a real richness being brought in to address a wide range of individuals where they need to be addressed. And so I think we're about as close now to individual education programs for each student as we're probably ever going to get. It would be lovely if we could, you know, have that written out for every single child and follow through. But I think with the data that we have, the data systems that we have, the professional development that's offered, and the work that's being done, I think we're...
We have the most comprehensive learning profiles that we've ever had in St. Mary's County Public Schools due to unify and goal book and things such as that. I mean, it really is.
So, you know, we passed the budget. Money very well spent on people and programs, and so thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Sitting here, what I've heard you say, you're a scientist. You are. It's prescriptive and it's meaningful. You identify the students as to when they need it, what they need, and how they need it, to help the students. And the literacy plan that you attach is full of additional information if we want to dig deeper into our comprehensive literacy plan. So thank you, ladies, for all that you do to help our students, because literacy is the foundation. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, finally, Dr. Farrell, sitting patiently in the back. Thank you.
Dr. Farrell, Dr. Beasley.
We're going to finish, as we ended, with a conversation about national board certification.
So I brought the binder of certification.
Oh, my goodness.
Because I heard that you guys wanted to learn all about it.
No, but I haven't done my weights today, so if you'd like me to lift weights.
So this is the binder. This is all the policies and regulations from MSD that have to do with certification. And going through the training for that...
There needs to be a paperwork production act on that.
Yeah.
I mean, seriously?
Right. It takes a year to go through. Mr. Rose was our most recent trainee that went through the program. Here in St. Mary's, we have four people that are authorized to issue certificates. As far as I know, no other school system in Maryland has four people. So sometimes other systems are a little jealous of us, but...
Sometimes, sometimes.
So to kind of quickly give you guys just like a little slice of certification in Maryland, there's a few routes to how people can become certified in Maryland. One is to complete a Maryland-approved program, which means they go to a Maryland college that's already been approved by MSD that has a teacher ed program. They complete that program, they pass all the tests, and they get employed by us, and we issue them a certificate. That's one way and kind of sometimes the easiest way. Then there's out-of-state-approved programs. So this is people that have graduated from Pennsylvania, New York. They completed a teacher ed program that was approved by that state's education department, and they've completed tests. And their endorsement area matches something that we have here in Maryland, which doesn't always match. Sometimes states have different certification areas than we have. The next is national board certification. So as you guys talked earlier, once you obtain national board certification in the state of Maryland, you can get your certification just by having national board certification, regardless where you got it, as long as it's in an area that matches state certification here. So, and not all states do that. And then the next, which is probably the most convoluted, is experienced professionals. So if you have 27 months of teaching experience in the last seven years in the area that you hold the endorsement, then you can come to Maryland and get that certificate also. Now, let's say you have several endorsement areas. Like, let's say you have English and Spanish and math, but you've only taught English for 27 months out of the last seven. You only get English. You don't get all the rest. Unless, of course, then you've also taken the test that Maryland requires for those other areas, then you can have them added on and stuff like that. So there's a couple other routes to certification that are important for you guys to know and understand. One is a transcript analysis. So a lot of times when you guys have an appointment before you that says that they're kind of a conditional teacher, what we're doing is we're doing a transcript analysis to find out what they've already done and what they might still need to do in order to become certified. If they're not in a program, like a graduate program that's going to lead to certification, they're just going to piecemeal together the coursework to try to get certified, that's what we call a transcript analysis. So we, the four of us in human resources that are certified by the state to issue certificates, can do transcripts analysis, but only for individuals that are employed by the board as certificated teachers. So we're not allowed by the state, we're not allowed to do them for like paraeducators. We're not allowed to do them for secretaries. We're not allowed to do them for building service workers. We can only do transcript analysis if you're employed by the board under a teacher's contract. Otherwise, the state wants to do them, because they own it all. So once a transcript analysis is issued, it's good for three years. So the state wants to know that they can take that wherever they go into whatever school system they decide to go into, if it's not St. Mary's. And then the last is a resident teacher program. If you've been around a while, you remember that we used to have a resident teacher... If, um, you've been around a while, you remember that we used to have a resident teacher program with the College of Notre Dame, um, that lasted for several years, um, until kind of the budget crisis hit and then we, um, stopped kind of hiring, uh, resident teachers. But resident teacher programs means that, uh, an individual enrolls in a program that's approved by the state, again, um, by MSD, and they complete certain coursework before they ever get hired by the Board of Education and before they ever start teaching. But they're also continuing to get that coursework throughout the time that they're employed by the board. Then we talk about types of certificates. So, once you get through the pathway, then you're issued a type of certificate. So, a conditional certificate, um, which you guys know means that you haven't met the full requirements to become fully certified in the state of Maryland. Conditional certificates are only good for two years and one person can only ever have two conditional certificates in their lifetime. You can't have any more than two conditional certificates ever. You have to complete at least twelve credits of your, your transcript analysis or your, um, required credits to move, to renew for a conditional certificate, um, if you don't finish them all in the first two years. Did I miss anything on that? Uh, and you also have to have completed your basic skills assessment, which is usually Praxis One or SAT scores or ACT, something like that. Um, then Standard Professional One is what most teachers get, so straight out of college, you just graduated with your bachelor's degree in, in education, um, you haven't started teaching yet, you're going to get a SPC One, it's good for five years. Um, you can never renew an SPC One. Um, so, during the five years, you have to take at least six credits. They have to be your reading credits if nothing else, um, if you haven't already met the reading requirements. Uh, if you don't do everything that's required to move to the Advanced Professional Certificate, then you get what's called a Standard Professional Two. That's good for another five years. Um, and by the end of that five-year period, you must either qualify for your APC or if you haven't already had two conditional certificates, you can go to a conditional certificate, but that impacts tenure and pay. So, then, the Advanced Professional Certificate, um, you have to have at least three years of teaching. You have to have earned either a master's degree, thirty-six credits, or a National Board Certificate. And this is what most teachers get, um, once they, they've been around a little while, what, what, either they've gotten their three years done or they've gotten their master's done or their master's equivalency. Um, so, Scott and I, that's what we have, uh, an APC and we have to renew that every five years. Every five years, we have to present at least six credits. They have to be in reading if we haven't already met the reading requirement. Counselors always have to present one credit for Lauren's Law to renew their APC or any other certificate. And we have that all the way up until what we call a Senior Teacher Waiver. Senior Teacher Waiver means, once you reach age fifty-five or you have twenty-five years of service, then you no longer have to present your six credits to renew your certificate. You can renew it under Senior Teacher, except if you're a school counselor. Then you still have to present your one credit for Lauren's Law. That's not exempt from the Senior Teacher Waiver. Every time you move from one certificate to another, the state always asks us, have they met their reading requirements? So, we know for, uh, elementary, that is, they have to have twelve credits in reading. For secondary and K through twelve, they have to have six. If you hold both, if you hold a elementary and a secondary or elementary and a K through twelve endorsement, you have to have the twelve credits to keep your, um, elementary Basic skills and, and pedagogy and content tests, of course, that's a basic requirement for the state of Maryland. You have to have those, um, to get past your, your conditional certificate, to get past your SPC One or SPC Two into your APC. And at every phase of this, you have to complete what we call Professional Development Plan, which kind of says, you have a plan moving forward in the next five years of what you're going to do to meet your renewal requirements before your certificate expires.
Will you explain what Lauren's Law is?
Lauren's Law is the requirement for suicide prevention, um, for counselors, and it was enacted two years ago, I believe.
Twenty sixteen in the fall. And it's also student trauma, so it has to be a combination of suicide prevention with our students and then how to deal with students who have experienced trauma.
Thank you.
So, all counselors in the state of Maryland have to have that before they can renew their certificate as well. So, Colleen is going to jump up and help me with the National Board Certification because she is now the expert on it, speaking about it so much tonight. Go ahead.
Oh. I thought I was just the compliment to your.
So, uh, in order to, to achieve National Board Certification, you must have at least a bachelor's degree. Again, that's the minimum requirement for certification in the state of Maryland. You have to hold a valid teaching certificate in a state. Um, for Maryland, it's Maryland, of course. Um, and then, three years of successful classroom teaching experience or school counseling. Um, for Maryland, there's twenty-five certificates, I mean, for the National Boards, there's twenty-five certificate areas, um, sixteen different, different disciplines and four different developmental levels.
And those are early childhood or childhood, adolescence and young adulthood, so.
So, the four components for a National Board are Content Knowledge Assessment, Differentiation and Instruction, Teaching Practice and Learning Environment, and Effective and Reflective Practitioner. Practitioner. My God.
Um, so, these are the four components. Teachers, um, National Board re, revised the process. Um, I initially certified as a National Board Certified Teacher back in, and I always get this wrong, um, it was two thousand and four. I always want to say nineteen ninety-four, but that is not true at all. It was two thousand, it was two thousand and four and then I renewed, um, my, in my window in two thousand and thirteen. So, they revised it in about two thousand and fifteen to make it, so when I went through, it was a one-year process. You had to do, um, like five, six components. Now, it's four components and you have a three-year window. So, um, candidates can really decide how they're going to work on certification and in what order. Can you go back one? Um, so, Content Knowledge Assessment is component one. That is actually a, a test. They have to go, uh, candidates have to go to an actual testing center. Um, there's a testing window, actually, um, the, the candidate component window opens in the next few days. So, the window is, um, I believe it's April through June. They have to actually go somewhere. Our nearest one is Alexandria, I think. You sit for an actual test. Um, it's like a Praxis Test or something else. Even though it's component one, candidates can take it whenever they want. Um, it's, it's a culminating. Um, Differentiation and Instruction is the component two. Um, you're looking at student work samples. You're really looking at what are students producing? How are we showing movement and growth in our students? What are we doing when things go wrong? Um, Teaching Practice and Learning Environment, candidates have to, for component three, they have to videotape their practice, small group, whole group, um, and demonstrate their prowess and pedagogy. And then, Effective and Reflective Practitioner, the fourth component, um, is really all about what the teacher does to further their own teaching profession, their pedagogy, but really how them furthering their own teaching all comes back to students. And students are really the heart of every single component of National Board Certification. Um, and they are driving the process. It's all about how I can improve my practice for the students that I work with. So, as I said, I'm sorry, I kind of took over. Um, one to three years, it's the choice. Um, candidates have that window. If for some reason, they do not, and it's, um, there are threshold, score thresholds for each component, but there's a combined score report at the end. If they don't, if a candidate does not make the combined score, they can redo components. So, we already have, um, candidates who are worried about one of their components, they're going to redo a component before they're even finished, um, just to make sure they make that score threshold. And then, at the end, so it used to be a ten-year certification, now it's down to a five-year certification. And you can renew that every, yes. But it's a maintenance of certification. So, it's more about, instead of me looking back on the past ten years of my life and figuring out how to write about that in two pages or less, it's a maintenance of certification. They're still rolling that out of, what am I doing to continue on this journey towards this, you know, really putting my students first and elevating my practice? Now, back to you.
Okay. So, there's, there's two ways that we can support, uh, candidates for National Board. One is through a fee waiver grant program through MSD. Um, they would only have to pay seventy-five dollars of the total nineteen seventy-five costs. Or, um, if they're not chosen for the fee waiver incentive program, they can always use tuition reimbursement funds as we have negotiated in each of our agreements. Um, they would pay the seventy-five dollars and then we would pick up the nineteen seventy-five for the rest of them. Do you want to talk about that?
Um, okay. So, um, National Board Certification, it is, I always talk with teachers about how it is the ultimate professional development experience. It really requires you to stop and reflect on your practice. What am I doing? Why am I doing it? And how is it really helping students? Um, instead of just going on with the, the same old, same old. So, um, it is, National Board Certification came out of the idea of, of elevating the teaching profession to sort of what doctors go through and there's been a lot of medical talk. But, um, doctors are board certified. Let's have teachers. What is the national standards for teachers because we don't always have those? Um, so, it is kind of that highest mark for a lot of teachers. It's, it's the next step. Um, I encourage teachers in their five-year plan, every time they renew their certificate, I'm like, maybe National Board Certification is something we'd like to look into. You can talk about the money.
So, so, in our negotiating agreement, we, um, have authorized, if, once a candidate achieves National Board Certification, they can have a three-thousand-dollar stipend, which is spread out of course, uh, over the course of twenty-six paces, um, for the lifetime of their certificate. So, it used to be that that stipend was good for ten years, now it will be good for five years and if they renew, another five and so on and so on. MSD also offers a, a matching stipend, um, but that comes and goes. So, sometimes, it's a thousand dollars, sometimes it's two thousand. Um, it all depends on whether you're in a comprehensive needs school, it's identified by MSD, or not a comprehensive needs school. And that, that stipend has really, um, been a bit of controversy lately with whether or not MSD has the money to cover it, uh, with the number of National Board Certified Teachers in the state increasing, um, that, that price tag increases as well. And so, the state has to come up with that, that money sometime, so. So, and, uh, St. Mary's County Public Schools has thirty-eight nationally board certified teachers and sixteen in the process. So, those are some great numbers, especially for a school system like ours.
I have no questions. Thank you.
This is a lot of great background information because we do see, you know, when we are approving someone to come in and teach, like we have, you know, whether they're certified or it's provisional and things like this. And this is very helpful in, in having that knowledge now. Thank you.
And besides the, the route that most take, which is a Maryland-approved program or a out-of-state approved program, um, those that are coming to you conditionally certified, they're just as unique as we all are. So, their starting point is so different, each one of them. There's no two that are alike, um, just because our backgrounds are so different too. So, every time you see someone that's coming with, uh, conditional certification to you, I, I can't tell you that theirs is the same as, as Colleen's or mine or Brian's. They're all unique just because their background is so unique too.
Um, my daughter, uh, was certified in Virginia. It's expired, she's teaching in Abu Dhabi. She's, hopefully will come back, um, the fact that, yeah, it's a whole.
I'm sorry, Jim.
If she, if she comes back, um, with an expired certification in Virginia, uh, will that have any, uh, will that help her get certified in, in Maryland?
I would encourage her to get her certificate renewed in Virginia now. That way, it's ready to be transferred to Maryland. It's easier to transfer an active certificate than it is an expired certificate.
Okay. Um, this is very, very interesting what you guys are doing. And the first thing I thought of when you started is, Dr. Smith has made it very clear, of course, you and your department, that we, we have to import teachers. Well, we live in southern Maryland and we have thousands of retired engineers that could very well, uh, with, uh, in my opinion, probably step right in and start teaching, you know, math, science. And, um, so, I know you covered it very well about how to, how to get certified and everything, but it seems to me that you being an HR director, that you could sit somebody down, ask them to do a PowerPoint on any subject that they want and assess pretty much within a half an hour whether they have the ability, number one, do they know the subject matter? And number two, can they teach? So, I guess I'm cursing the darkness here where you have a tremendous capability in the county. Is it any easier way that we can get these, uh, retired teachers? And by the way, most of them are not interested in a twenty-year career, you know, they may be five years and, you know, they retire when they're sixty-five and they want to hang it up when they're seventy-five. So, we've got this massive resource here. I'm just wondering, is any easy way that we can get these people on board?
Um, in the state of Maryland, no.
I was going to say that.
I'm sorry.
Thus the binder. And, and I will tell you that MSD, I was there on yesterday and they were talking about actually shutting down one of these pathways and making it more challenging to obtain a Maryland teaching certificate.
And when you look at the fact that it's not just, do you know the subject matter? But it's classroom management, it's understanding the development of, you know, psychological, um, development of students, um, I've, we have had in the past, you know, engineers come in to teach, um, and they might have been effective engineers, but not so much in teaching.
Well, I think to James' point, I don't, I think what the problem is with the, with the certifications and what MSD is doing is where you run into the roadblock is with your CTE, uh, teachers, right? Like, go find an HVAC instructor that's go, or an HVAC person that's going to want to come back and go to school for two years and, you know, take thirty-six credits just so he or she can stand in a classroom and talk about something that they've done for thirty years.
And that's a whole different policy when you look at trade and industry.
Right. Yeah. And, and actually, Anne Rundell County, um, I, I don't know if they've continued to pursue it, but they were looking at, um, pursuing some legislation that would allow them to, um, hire individuals for.
Adjunct professor.
Right. Very specific situations, um, in, in hard-to-recruit areas, so.
That did pass. It's actually called adjunct professor and it's, um, you can get an adjunct certificate if you only teach one period a day, once, uh, one period a day for a year.
That's very good.
So, just one period.
And is that statewide?
Yes.
I imagine the compensation level for one period a day would really draw somebody from a lucrative engineering or HVAC career to become, yeah.
Of course, she's not saying that all engineers are academically challenged. I'm sure she's not.
All right. Mary, what do you have? We're just going to stop right here.
I want to say congratulations to thirty-eight nationally board certified teachers that we have in SMCPS and the sixteen, best wishes to them, the sixteen, who are also in the process of becoming nationally board certified because it is a rigorous and challenging program to get there. And I appreciate that they are lifelong learners and they are just moving on up the pinnacle of their, um, profession. Thanks. Thank you for all the work that you do. I appreciate all of you in HR.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. You can, Campbell is close now.
Well, it turns out I'm with you before. One of the reasons that we, that we really wanted to bring this.
He's new contracting, he's just all chatty.
One, I'm always chatty. One of the reasons why we wanted to bring this forward was in lieu of, there's a great amount of conversation about the Kerwin Commission, the professionalization of the teaching, uh, of the teaching field. I would say you're already absolutely, it already is more than adequately professional. But they're trying to simplify and to simply say that everybody should be nationally board certified. The amount of effort that goes into, the dedication, the commitment to craft, the support that the school system and the school and the other staff members provide to help people through the process is what makes it valuable. It is not something that can be, um, mass marketed to all in a security. It is not something that can be, um, mass marketed to all in a security...
But they haven't talked about that whole piece of it in the Kerwin. Like, I wanna take a picture of that binder, and I wanna send it up there. I mean, I mean, in all honesty, and, I mean, everyone just talk, I'm really sorry, like, um...
It's okay. Take your time.
Um, but, I mean, everyone's just talking around, I mean, everyone's talking about this National Board Certification as if it's just like, "Oh, just go do this," right? Or, like, "Study for the CPA and take the test, and, you know, it's over in, you know, it's six months." But what they don't see is the background support and how much, how much of a, and I'm going to use the word burden, or maybe strain on the, the already...
It's a system left.
Right, on the system in order to, to get those teachers through that program.
I, I mean, talk to some of your, your teachers that you've had, I mean, pairs that you've had on sabbatical leave this year.
They're going through certification process, yeah.
Um, just to get through that hump of student teaching so that they can become teachers with us.
Right.
This is just another example of Kerwin having gone off the rails from what it was supposed to do.
I know, okay. Anyone else? I knew, I knew Kathy was gonna get that jab in somewhere. Didn't disappoint. Okay, anyone have anything else? All right, next meeting, just before St. Patrick's Day, people, March 13th at 9:00 AM. Wear your green. All right, and we're done.